Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the flag. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board Member Fortuna, if you could please read the mission statement we will call.
Sure.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Board Member Sutton.
Here.
Board Member Teltum.
Here.
Board Member Cunningham.
Here.
Board Member Aldani.
Here.
And Board Member Rashad is absent with notice. Board Member Vasio.
Here.
And I am Board Member Fortuna, and I'm also here to have a forum. Thank you. Okay, next up, I need to amend our agenda and remove Agenda Item 7C3 and Agenda Item 7C4. Can I get a motion for the amended agenda? Some support cue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Some support. Thank you. Superintendent Wonsley?
Turn it over to Mr. Field for the personnel report. For the presentations and retirements, we have Mari Kretkulu resigned from the assistant position at the high school here in Seja. She was a child care aide at Lee, and she resigned, and she will still be her coaching position. Christine Amalik, she was an assistant cook at Richmond Middle School. She was terminated, and she didn't respond to any emails to pick up anything. For new hires, we have Brian Brewster, field custodian, Brett McCloud, Richmond High School University softball coach, Mary Ransom, district wide assistant cook floater, and Amber Quinlan, who is the bus driver in training.
Thank you.
The review here has brought to my attention regarding the January 22nd board meeting, and nor did I receive any questions regarding the Clinton accounts.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Oh, yes. Ms. Wonsley, I can't help but notice this is the second meeting now in a row where there seems to be a lot of movement in the food service department. Is there some changes, or?
Well, this particular one, they just started the process and never finished. We couldn't get a hold of them to bring them in. Others.
Retired.
Retired. Ms. Oshlin retired. As I said at the last board meeting, we added those floaters to backfill because food service has always been a department that has, or these sessions have always been. In the last several years, it's been a department that has had a lot of influx. Just part of that, I believe, is the sheer volume that now they're serving meals. Just to give you perspective, from September to December of this year, they serve 68,000 lunches, which equates a little over 850 lunches a day in the district. So, a lot of kids are eating, a lot of stuff is being prepared, so.
And these are all part-time positions, or are they full-time?
They're all part-time positions. They work in general less than 30 hours a week. They're roughly from 7:30 to 1:30, or some are 9:00 to 1:30.
So, is there any issues with that? Do some of them want full time? Is that?
I only know of one individual who's expressed the need for benefits from a full-time perspective. None of them have, at least to myself, I don't know if Jamie's received it, but wanting hours. Benefits has been the only issue. Their contract is up this June, so we'll begin negotiations with them soon.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, we have a presentation for our district spotlight, Career and Technical Education Month. Ms. Staples and Ms. Staple?
Well, good evening. February is CTE Recognition Month. It's a time to celebrate and highlight our programs that are equipping our students with the tools, knowledge, and experiences they need to thrive in today's dynamic workforce. Today, 54% of jobs in the state of Michigan require some skills training or certificate, more than a high school diploma, but less than a four-year degree. More than 50% of employers in the state of Michigan report actively recruiting entry-level candidates through CTE channels, such as the ones that we offer here at Richmond High School. Our CTE programs provide students with rich learning opportunities where they get to roll up their sleeves and dive into real-world projects, whether it's repairing machines, crafting culinary delights, or designing innovative technologies and video games. Our students gain invaluable skills that prepare them for tomorrow's careers. Here is our overarching career clusters from the state. And I would like to just point out that over the last three years, we've added an education pathway, a computer science pathway, and a theater fine arts pathway to our CTE offerings. I want to bring your attention to this lovely red line. In the 16th, 17th school year, there were 129 total students enrolled. That means that they could have also been enrolled in multiple programs as well. Currently, the 23, 24 school year, there are 493 total enrollments. That means that they are duplicated numbers, but that is incredible increase of our enrollment into our CTE programs, something to be very proud of here. Some information here of our female and male enrollment numbers. Back in 16th and 17th school year, there were 45 males and 84, oh, sorry, 45 females and 84 males enrolled in our CTE programs. Currently, there are 175 females, 318 males currently enrolled in our CTE programs. And a fun fact, 60% of students with special needs currently in this school year are enrolled in a CTE program. Before I hand it off, I want to say a few thank yous. I would like to thank the Board of Education for your ongoing support for our CTE programs. It's really refreshing to have a board that is so knowledgeable and focused on career, and it's really special. So, I'm just saying thank you to all of you. There's another person here that needs to do a very big thank you. There is so much that goes on behind the scenes, whether it comes to reporting, whether it comes to the budgets, whether it comes to the ongoing vision, the advisory meetings, and all the compliance pieces that come along with the CTE program. And thank you so much, Ms. Sago, for all of your work in the CTE program and department. Truly exceptional, so it does not go unnoticed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, one of the quotes that I've really been trying to use a lot as CTE director is "CTE good for students, good for business, good for the community," because I truly believe that our CTE programs are good for all three of those. One, we're preparing our students for the future, whether it's trade school, directly into the workforce, college. It's good for businesses to have students come out of high school with a set of skills, whether it be technical skills, hands-on skills, collaborative skills. And also, it's good for the community, because what we're seeing now is we're starting to see our students working in local establishments like over at Lennox, Richmond Lennox EMS events. So, it really does impact all three groups of people. And I think as adults in the building, it impacts us as well when we get to see students be successful in these three areas. As Ms. Staples said, one of the things that was talked about at our recent career breakfast was that the 54% of the jobs require skill training, and only 48% of Michigan workers are trained at that level. So, they're talking about there's a 6% gap between what businesses need and what the workers within the state are able to be trained at. And so, with that being said, we really are focusing on, again, not pushing students down one pathway or another, but allowing them to see that there's multiple different pathways, and you can be on both at once. You can be in a trade and also going to college at the same time. One of my favorite pieces of data to look at, and the state actually has not updated this, and I'm waiting for them to, but back in the 2020, 2021 school year, when looking at the graduation rate of students that participated in CTE programs and then all students, you can see that there was over a 15% larger amount, I don't know, everyone said increasing, but there was 15% more, higher graduation rate for students that were in CTE programs. And again, I think that that's the connection to the community, connection to business partners, connection to the school, and those students seeing a purpose of why they're coming. And I think that even we're starting to see that and hear that from our students when they talk about whether it's cooking in the kitchen, or "I'm going on my clinicals," or "I have to make sure I'm only allowed to have a certain number of absences in EMT. I can't skip today because even though, you know, most of the seniors aren't home, I need to make sure I'm there because I need to get my clinical hours." So, I think a lot of those things go into graduation rates such as that. A couple of updates from the state and county, and then we'll go and look at the specific updates here within the building. We are currently, as I talked about last year, transitioning from segments to competencies. And the state is really rolling this out gradually. Right now, we have four of our programs that are falling under the new set of guidelines, which is business management, EMT, or emergency medical technician, finance, we call it accounting, and then also our marketing programs. And so, with that being said, there are specific requirements that the state now is mandating, which is that all students earn or attempt to earn a certification in those different classes. And so, while for EMT, it's the national registry exam, for our business classes, all of our students will be sitting for one form of a Microsoft test. So, Microsoft Excel will be taken in the accounting class. We've got the Microsoft Word test, and then also the Microsoft PowerPoint test. So, some of our students will be leaving, and we have freshmen in these classes. So, there will be even freshmen within our building at the end of this year that potentially will be certified in a suite of Microsoft applications. Actually, tomorrow, we are going to the MISD, the culinary program and the computer programming program. We are going to the MISD, and we are working with the teachers from around the county because computer programming and culinary are making that transition next year. So, their names will be added to the list. They will have a required certification exam, and they're moving from a long set of segments to more focused competencies, really to hone in on what skills we want the students to have. Also, our AIS, our Heavy Equipment Repair Program, was identified for a track audit. That is when the state actually is coming in and is going to be auditing programs throughout Macomb County. We had one program selected, myself and Mr. Olson. We've been working to make sure all of our documents are in compliance, that everything is updated, and basically, the head of that SIP code is what it's called, will be coming to AIS. They will be coming here to the high school between March 12th and 14th, and will basically be auditing that program and just making sure that we are following all the regulations of the state. But when we sat down and did a quick look ourselves, we already really just had to make a couple of, more so formatting changes to our documentation, but all of the requirements were there. So, with that being said, we put together a little video just to give a glimpse, it's about five minutes long, of what has been going on in our CTE classes. Sorry, I just want to make sure, I don't know why it's not going good. Full screen is unavailable. Sorry, I want people to be able to see it. I tried to be fancy and embed it, but. Not a tech teacher.
Find the student who's certified in Microsoft.
I know. And I told, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, I embedded it." It's gonna pop up right away. There it goes. Thank you. Saved the day.
There are four major components of career and technical education: classroom instruction, laboratory learning, work-based learning, and student leadership. Come along and see each of these four components in action here at Richmond High School. Instructors in our CTE classes integrate both academic and technical skills to support students' learning. While they begin through focused instruction, they then reinforce what is being taught through hands-on experiences, and then provide additional depth of knowledge to support those technical skills. Through laboratory learning, students are able to perfect their technical skills through simulation labs, project-based learning, and student skill demonstrations. Additionally, through laboratory learning, students are able to reinforce what they've been learning in the classroom.
I'm Andrew, I'm a senior in the AIS program, and my favorite part about the AIS program is all the hands-on experience and being able to actually touch the stuff instead of it just being on the board in the textbook.
To prepare a dynamic workforce for the future, students need to be exposed to as many career options as early as possible. Through work-based learning, students experience career awareness, career exploration, career preparation, and career training.
The field trips, going on field trips and doing all the hands-on stuff at the field trips, like taking trips up to Novi for Manufacturing Day. It got to show me some of the experiences of different trades, and that was pretty cool. My favorite part of the Heavy Equipment Repair program is actually being able to operate in machines and getting some real-life experience, which can be used on the job site. And we also learn how to fix these when they break down, so definitely helps in the real world.
Through student leadership, students are given the opportunity to learn employability skills and career-ready practices. Additionally, these prepare students to become effective leaders themselves through participation in student organizations as well as serving as student leaders within the classroom.
Well, being in marketing too, we work in the school stores to be that opportunity to explore how to run a school store, how to keep inventory, how to work things throughout the day, how to check people out, how to greet customers, how to just be a normal person working like a daily job in the life.
So, sorry, I swear it wasn't that. So, or I don't know what's going on, but I think it really shows all the different experiences that our students have had throughout the past year. We have really been able to participate in a wide variety of field trips. We did everything. We went to two Manufacturing Day field trips. We went up to Novi for the My Career Quest, which has hundreds of employers out there that students get to meet with and learn about. We went to the activity, the smaller-scale version over at Macomb. And, you know, computer programming, went to SC4, and got to not only see the classrooms in computer program, but also get to meet with the esports team there as well. So, really just a wide variety of experiences. Some specific updates to us here at Richmond High School within accounting, business management, and marketing, while those are three separate programs, really, they fall under that one umbrella of business and what Ms. Christiansen teaches. We brought back our DEPA organization. We're excited for, while they only competed once, we had multiple state qualifiers this year, which we're really excited about. And as I mentioned, all three classes will be testing in the Microsoft Excel, Word, and PowerPoint. For computer programming this year, we were able to, with your approval, purchase a new computer lab, so by the end of this year, we'll have those new computers in. They're not your average one-of-the-mill computers. They have all sorts of souped-up parts to them. I don't know the correct term. Not a computer person, but it has what the computer programming, the esports, the coding, all of that stuff, the equipment that they need for that. So, culinary arts, Ms. Bishop, Chef Sarah, has been with us for a couple of weeks, and the students have done nothing but get their hands on food in the kitchen. Everything from creme brulee this morning to pizzas, and not only that, but making their own mozzarella cheese, learning dough from scratch, quesadillas, I missed that day. It's just, they've made so many things, and every day, it's something new that's coming out of the kitchen, and then working with her on the relaunch of opening the Blue Devil Cafe. EMT, we were able to move to campus this year, so based on how we ended last year, we were able to get equipment that was necessary. The state came in, they looked at our facilities, and they made sure that we had everything that we needed to be an official location. We also had the ambulance, we talked about the animatage table, we had the simulation mannequin. And so, that program, last year, I think we had three or four students, this year we have 11. And so, I think really just having them on campus has really helped. AIS, we are looking at additional opportunities. This is the first year that we're having third-year students, so I'm working with Mr. Olson to make sure that we provide opportunities for those third-year students. Those really are going to be the students that want to focus in on heavy equipment repair, so we're working on developing a program for them that has more, the more abilities, now that they've learned the skills, how can they help support AIS and support, you know, possibly other clients that they work with in terms of the heavy equipment repair. We have our first-year, our second-year students in teacher cadet through their experiential learning program. Those students were able to get into the classrooms over at Lee and the middle school earlier than our first-year students, and so they're over there for two hours a day three days a week. Our theater program is new. I am working on submitting the new program application. While that used to come from the building, the state has now changed the process, and so I submit it to the county level, and then the county will submit it on our behalf. So, I will be submitting that application tomorrow. And then, our four TV2 students, last year, I talked about how Mr. Robbins was going to get his drone certification. He did, in fact, earn his FAA drone certification, his pilot's license. He's two-thirds complete with an actual pilot's license by doing the drone certification, and we currently have four students that are spending this year also going towards sitting for that exam. So, fingers crossed, the one picture you saw on there, they have these small drones, they fly them in the gym. Now that the weather's getting nice, they're able to take the big one out, and so sometimes, if you might see it, if you're on campus during the day, I had a couple people report that they saw a drone, and it actually was our students in TV production. So, those are some updates. At this time, I would like to celebrate, we have two students and our business partner. Every year, we identify two students as our CTE Students of the Year and one business partner. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Carrie Shadman to come up. The student she nominated, Kayla, was unable to be in attendance this evening, but I did want to share accolades about Kayla, but then also the work that Ms. Shadman has done with Kayla. What she said about Kayla was that she's demonstrated outstanding growth and perseverance in her work. She currently works in a fourth-grade classroom and recently wrote how special it was to work with a reluctant reader. Because of her encouragement, her student completed his novel and passed his test. She was thrilled to be a part of his growth and success. And so, I think that that truly encompasses not only the teacher cadet program, but the impact that students at the high school can have on the other buildings. Kayla actually is also doing her internship hour, so she is spending three hours a day over at the middle school in a fourth-grade classroom, and she truly is on the path to becoming a teacher herself, has plans to go to Macomb, and then go on to another four-year university to get her teaching degree. She currently is working this evening, but I did want to honor Carrie, or, yeah, honor Carrie for honoring Kayla, but also all of the work that the two of them have done. So, thank you. And our second student, if we can have Mr. Olson come up, as well as Lucas. Mr. Olson identified Lucas as the other CTE student of the year. He describes Lucas and says, "He's never shy about getting his hands dirty or helping on special projects. He's a valuable member of the classroom, is not afraid to ask questions and contribute to group discussions." And one of the things that I thought was great in the response that Mr. Olson wrote about Lucas was that Lucas currently is working at a, for a car, a car dealership, right? Or a car? And repair shop. And so, while it isn't exactly what he is doing with the AIS program, it's very, very similar. And so, I think just seeing that students are seeing ties to what they're doing outside of school and in school, and vice versa, is extremely important. So, thank you, Mr. Olson, and thank you, Lucas. Congratulations. And then, don't go too far, Mr. Olson, because I would like to have Mr. Olson also come up, and then Ms. Megan Ashart here also come up. Mr. Olson identified Megan as our Business Partner of the Year. She has been an invaluable resource to the AIS Heavy Equipment Program. She supports the program, but not only coming and speaking as an industry partner, but she attends all of the advisory board meetings. And one of the things that I think is so important is the first time I met her, and I think subsequently, every time we've talked after, is that she is not just in our advisory board for her own self and her own company. She truly has said, like, "I don't care if these kids go and work for a competitor. I just want to make sure that students are being exposed to the industry and are growing our industry and our program." And I think that that's such a selfless thing to say, of like, "I'm not here for myself. I'm not here for the family business. I'm here truly for the students." And so, says she always has invaluable insights on how to grow the program, what the industry is looking for. She exemplifies what it means to be a business partner and always makes herself available should we need assistance or guidance. And so, Megan, I just want to thank you for being a part of Richmond High School's programs as well. And so, that is the end. Happy CTE Month.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you to all of our supporters and our CTE program. It's really great to see how much it's grown over the years. Any discussion or any questions?
Just in front of you have the 34th Annual CTE Award. Board Member Fortuna and I, along with Ms. Sago and Mrs. Staples attended the function February 2nd. It was a great event, and talked about our partnerships and our students. It was a great event and talked about our partnerships and our students.
Thank you. Okay, next up is our instructional spotlight. We have the 24, 25 middle school and high school course catalog. Oops, Staples.
Right. So, and in your pocket you have this lovely document summarizing the changes to the, to the 24, 25 middle school and high school course catalog. The summary changes are, on page one, we have the update of the school year. Page two to three, we have update to staff, including removing staff nods appropriate for the course catalogs. Page four, page numbers will be obviously corrected after the final draft is approved and we'll get that all correct. Page six, there's clarifying language as to how parents can access students' educational development plans. Page seven, it's a new course, new course proposal for the middle school, argumentative writing and debate. I'm really excited for this. You guys, so I'm like, yeah.
Quick correction, step eight, seven, it's page 11, it's my error. Step page 11, the argumentative.
Page 11. Those are changes back, it's gonna be amazing. Page 23 to 24, there's some clarifying language in the course descriptions for computer programming one and computer programming two. And on page 44, we have correcting an error in last year's catalog regarding the elective numbers. We have removed Algebra II as an option for middle school and Algebra II over two years, which was approved last year. We kept Algebra II B to streamline and grandfather those kids through. On page 46, we are combining physical and earth science as a required science credit. Personal finance is also a requirement for the class of 2028 and beyond. So this group of eighth graders right now, they're going to be able to experience a personal finance credit that is going to be a requirement for their graduation. It's going to be really exciting for them to learn that financial literacy. Are there any questions so far, about 46 pages in?
I just go, going back to the argumentative writing and debate, how did that come about?
So each year I send out to staff a blank proposal form and I ask for input if anybody has any adjustments or proposals to make they fill out a proposal form. And then the process is we sit down as the administrative team and we go through all the different proposals and we decide if this is going to be what can run and being able to offer more electives and more streamlined, like, support courses for kids. So that's the process that we go through.
Love, like, yeah. If I'd like to, something I would like to teach or I'm excited about, right, teaching and.
Honestly, it's one of my favorite things, is seeing the course proposals. You get to see those like passion projects from teachers, you know, and I just love that. Like, what do you do? Oh, cool. Let's do that.
To follow up with, I'm a personal finance, just to make a note, because it starts with this coming eighth graders coming in, that becomes a required course. For the current ninth, 10th, and 11th, that's still a possibility to be a 12th grade math related course.
Right.
But the current incoming eighth grader, incoming ninth grader, eighth grader, will not have that as a math related course, it's now a requirement.
It's now a requirement from the state.
So that course offers kind of dual requirements or meets dual requirements, depending on the grade level of the student.
Any other questions so far? So it does not take away a math class for those now eighth graders going into ninth?
No, in, in the past, the current, current ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, they have to have a senior year math. They could use this as part of that senior year math. Current eighth graders will not be allowed to use personal finance as a senior math because now it has to meet a graduation requirement for personal finance. So they can take other math related courses that we have in the catalog or online courses too.
Okay. I paused here for dramatic effect. For page 46 through 47, added language to robotics elective credit if run as an after school program. Because you know what that's leading up to. Page 61, noting if criminal justice is not run, the district would need to reapply for the CTE SIP code for the search occasion. So those do expire if you don't run courses for so long, they may need to reapply if they're in accredited CTE program.
So I just want to clarify language on this one. As Ms. Staples said, if it doesn't run for so many years, we have to restart the process all over. We currently have a teacher that's on layoff that taught, I do not believe this teacher has layoff recall rights anymore. So if we're running this, there is a possibility we have to look for a new instructor. But we're leaving the course catalog and see if there's an interest for students to run the course.
Page 70, we are adding English nine through 12 support classes, just the same as we did with the math support classes in each of those grades. On page 74, we are going to remove digital literacy and communications course. Kind of like post-COVID law, live in the digital literacy age, right? This course is a little.
This, this course, just so you clarify, has not run in years. We have not been able to run it. There hasn't been an interest in it.
Page 74 and 75 is clarifying language on prerequisite and course descriptions. On page 75, we're going to add grade 10 as an option for writing for publication in yearbook.
So just now, it's not just the 11th and 12th graders that continue, some of ours continue.
We're going to open up our elective offerings and you'll see some things too with some other courses that we're trying to offer more electives to some of the lower grades. We are going to be, page 77 to 78, we are removing the Blue Crew support. Now that we are putting in our English nine, 10, 11, and 12 English support classes, we can now remove the Blue Crew. Page 78 to 79, adding English nine support, English 10 support, English 11 support, and English 12 support classes. Page 82, we're going, we are removing Algebra II B as an option for students. II A was removed last year and like I said, we're grandfathering those students that are still taking Algebra II over two years through, but then we are going to eliminate that. Page 83, adding grade nine as an option to take personal finance per the state requirement, correcting incorrect course code in Power School for the course trigonometry. Page 87, there's clarifying language on the prerequisites for Corral Honors.
What, what's this?
So we tried to eliminate a lot of the prerequisites that have like teacher recommendation. Right now the Corral Honors has an audition process and really we're trying to make it as like less subjective as possible. If you have, you know, your audition form and you're following that criteria, that's an objective way to look, to see who's entering the class, but really just trying to open up the opportunity for students and take out the, those kind of like subjectivity prerequisites. Every student should have access to courses. Page 90 to 92, clarifying language on prerequisites for physical education courses. Once again, trying to open up those courses for, for access for all. Page 94, revised course description for physical and earth science course, now that we're adding in more of the earth science into the physical. Page 97, dun, 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 here's the dramatic effect, add robotics as a two-hour course. I know this is a passion project for, for Mr. Wong Lee, for K-12, robotics, and this is definitely on the road, so this is fantastic. Page 98, we added American Wars as a social studies elective course and was proposed by a high school teacher. You're smiling. Sounds good, huh? Sounds like a good class.
He's discussing this.
Oh, that's good. Page 100 to 101, there's going to be clarifying language on prerequisites for government, economics, AP government, and politics and honors economics. Page 102.
Which prerequisites, meaning?
What courses that they need to take ahead of time.
To be able to, so we're changing those classes, didn't have?
We're not changing the order or anything, but because some, some districts are entering personal finance into other courses, we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves by saying you have to have X, Y, and Z. If we have a senior, for example, that transfers in and they need the financial, the personal finance course, we need to be able to make sure that there's no like prerequisite barriers that would eliminate them from being able to take the class we need for graduation. Page, oh, sorry, another part to that is the, the prerequisites for AP psychology, understanding world through, wealth history through film, relocated language regarding sign permission slip for R-rated movies for that course. Page 104, added American Wars course description. On page 105 to 106, there's added language to Spanish three and four, that this course may be offered online, we just don't have enough students to enroll. Page 109 to 112, it's clarifying updated dual enrollment information. The assessment and minimum qualifying scores chart was updated, indicating the source of the document. On page 100.
Can I speak to this one? Just so the board knows, on the dual enrollment, there is legislation, Public Act 160 of 1996 and subsequent in the School Aid Act, they talk about who's eligible. So a lot of the language that came that has been added to the course catalog reflects directly from the language in the legislation in terms of who's eligible. We clarified some of the language that if you start in ninth grade, how many dual enrollment courses you can go or actually take each year, if you started in 10th grade or started in 11th grade. Just trying to clarify so that it eliminates questions or confusion, I should say, if there's a better word. As Renee said, section three, which is page 110, that chart has been replaced with the new chart establishing the qualifying scores that students would need to be able to take dual enrollment courses. Couple of years ago, if you recall, we remembered, or we added the language, which was in the law, we just clarified that at the time they register, they have to determine whether it's going to be for college credit, for high school credit, and so forth. So you'll see in here, we added the language at the time of registration. So that there's no confusion that, you know, five weeks into the course, I want to switch. The law says at the time the register, when you have to make that, that choice.
On page 120, there's language clarification on dual enrollment process. Page 122, there's the removal of the EDP acknowledgement form. And on page 125, there's added information to the nondiscrimination statement.
So the removal of the EDP acknowledgement form, we have not been using that form. What we've been doing is through the Zillow, which is formerly Career Cruising and Zillow, that's, parents have access to what their kids are looking at with, like, their careers. That's the access that we use, it's a digital platform.
Any questions?
So when it comes to certain courses, I did a survey between 100 students at the high school, all grades, and at least two of them that came up was a sports management, sports medicine program, very growing exponentially in colleges right now and is becoming a much larger field for job, for job opportunities. So a lot of kids are wanting that course to be opened up. And then another one was, another one used to have a co-op option. So where the school partnered with certain businesses in the area and where certain senior, and they have all of their requirements, yeah, for graduation, that they can open up a co-op hour almost, for a couple hours and go work in a field hands-on and get experience before they go off. There's this job. Like, a lot of seniors would want to go into psychology, for example, and go and work instead of being a school, almost taking off the law classes. Because that's what's, you know, that's hours to.
Lots of elective offerings for 12th graders.
Right, yeah.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for that. I would love to see those survey results. You know what a fun fact is? Our education course pathway was entirely created based off a student survey, the one that you just similarly did. So I love hearing stuff like that, especially because it came from you and you're getting student input. And of course, that helps us drive our decisions. So if you want to share that with me, I would love that. Thank you so much.
I'll just follow up. There is a partnership we do have with New Haven regarding sports medicine. Some of the things that go into making decisions on putting in here is the ability to have the right certifications of our staff. And sometimes we're limited in what we can offer, like for instance, and I'll just use Mr. Yost as an example, he is very passionate about American Wars and he probably would do, he will do a phenomenal job of it. Currently though, he is our only Spanish teacher at the high school. So we still have a posting out there, we've set limits, courses that are assigned to teachers. So that is our challenge, but we are open to being very creative. I know we've had preliminary conversations with Jeff White about expanding the EMT program, which might, Andrea, help me out with the name that.
EMR.
EMR, which is like a beginning, more of a general introductory course, to see if kids that really want to go into EMT might want to take that and that EMT might be the second. So those are things that we're constantly looking at, but anything to share with Ms. Staples, please do. We want to have to look at it.
Because for those kinds of CTE that particular, there's outside people that can teach those classes, those are business people like we do, but our CTE programs, correct?
Any more questions? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our Kagan Cooperative Learning presentation. Ms. Staples.
In your backup documentation, you have two quotes. One is set tentatively for August 28th. It's going to be for three buildings. So proudly, we are finishing up our Kagan Professional Development Series. We've had Cooperative Learning Day One, Cooperative Learning Day Two, and now we go into the Win-Win Discipline, which is the last in the series. So we are at the ending stretch and this is really a fantastic opportunity, especially for our new teachers, to kind of see how Kagan fits into that classroom management piece and to solidify all of this work with Kagan. And I know you see it all over social media and how powerful Kagan has been to our district. So I'm, I'm asking that we have our very last professional development with Kagan on August 28th for someone to come out for all three buildings. And then you can see here is a quote for August. Like I've done a presentation before, we held summer workshops last year for some new, from teachers that were optional to go to, and they were such a great hit. Teachers loved being able to have the time to be able to come in before the hecticness of the school year and kind of help prepare. So I do want to provide opportunities for teachers that didn't get Cooperative Learning Day One and Two through Kagan, to be able to really make sure that all of our staff is fully trained and that, and this is solidified for us. So those are those two quotes in your backup documentation.
So if this is for August, this, it's next year's budget?
Yes, yes. It will all be out of next year's budget. However, if we can use some grant dollars, there are some grants that expire September 30th. So they're actually coming out of this year's grant, but they're going to appear in next year's budget.
Okay, so this is, this is something that we're going to approve in two weeks. This is something that you're not something to do for next year. You're looking for it to happen now?
Yes, we have to lock in the vendor and dates and all that stuff now. And Renee, just as a note, I just noticed the October 24th, they have the 23rd date, 2023 on this.
Oh, I know.
We'll just need to, we'll need to just correct that.
Get it updated, so, yeah.
I just realized that.
No problem. Any questions about Kagan or quotes? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our business operational proposed overnight extended trip request from Ms. Sabo and Ms. Christiansen. There is board members, you also have Dr. McKeer, some updated information we got in the first place.
Just a little bit. And I'll say my- Greetings, everyone. I am the business CTE teacher that Ms. Sabo talked about during her CTE presentation. I'm Mrs. Christensen. I had the honor of taking 12 students. Mrs. Fields was there too, as well, as a judge, two districts for DECA. It was in Lake Orion High School, and we had 12 students compete in either a team event or an individual event. One of our teams and one of our individuals did qualify for states. But as a new chapter this year, we are able to take two additional individuals, just because we're brand new this year, so they can experience states and compete. So I can take five students. Well, unbeknownst to me, being new to DECA, for those of you who are unfamiliar with DECA, does everyone kind of know what DECA is? Okay, good. We are able to take additional ones if other schools decline their offer. So I got an email on Friday saying I could take another student. So all the paperwork you have in front of you is for five students. I don't know if you see that on that first page, it would be six students. So it increases the cost a little bit, because each student's cost is $100. And then the hotel cost, which should be in there too as well, I don't know how they got the hotel room up, she's sharing the room with the three other ladies, the three other student, female students that are going, and went up $0.06. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the right mounts there. But ultimately, it's February, I'm sorry, March 14th to the 16th, it'll be two nights overnight. It's in Detroit, we, downtown Detroit. We are unsure what hotel we have, but I did, was able to pick options that I wanted in my first, second, and third choices. So I did pick the Marriott Renaissance Center as one, so our students could experience that. The other was the Westin Cadillac, and the third was the Cambria Hotel, which is a new property that was built downtown Detroit. What else can I tell you about it? I did send out a little packet for the students, just so they were aware of it, and congratulating them and their families, so the parents knew that their students doing, because some students do that at home, and tell their student parents. What else have I done? I have tried to secure, hopefully busing. I will be with the students full-time. This board break schedule will come down Thursday night, too, as well. So if you look, there is kind of a jam-packed itinerary in that paperwork you have. Everything kind of starts off the morning, on that Thursday morning at 11:00 a.m. They say it's a little bit of mad chaos, because there's registration processes, and it's all new to students. They do a lot of formal events, and it's a great opportunity for students to actually see what a conference is like, definitely see what a conference is like. So they'll have opportunities during a student orientation, they'll also have an opportunity to do vendors and career, our vendor and career expo, go to as well, and I will be with them at all times for those two days.
Any questions?
So, I know you had in here about the school must take you, but competition slash conferences at Huntington-
Yes.
And wherever you stay, how-
People mover, and it's complimentary for all DECA.
Very good. Thank you.
And I just, sorry, I just want to say something. One of the things that, my first thought is like, well, it's not that far away, but DECA does require all of the students to stay. So one of the things, as I was reading through, is that, you know, they have to be dress business professional, the entire, like, no jeans, it's very strict dress code, and they really do form, over those two and a half days, a simulated, like, a professional business conference that any of us would go to as adults in the real world. And so I think that it's a great opportunity for those students to see that, and then also to grow our chapter of DECA. While it was up and running, took a hiatus, we did have to, we are being recognized as a new chapter because of that hiatus, and so that's why we were awarded some additional seats at the competition. And I really think that this will give not only the students a great opportunity, but also the program an opportunity to grow as well, because I know this definitely is one of those student organizations that needs that leadership, kind of chuck box, but is great for our students to participate in, so, just a little background.
Yeah, and just a couple of years ago, when I was going to Richmond High School, I went down, and it was called OAC back then, many years ago. But it is, it's an amazing experience to get down there, and you are right about knowing what a conference, doing all that, it's just, it's a very cool experience. Yep.
Excellent.
What is the out-of-pocket cost to each of the students? Or would there be none if we approved this?
Well, we're only allowed two meal vouchers, as of right now, and you can see the itinerary. So I did tell the students going forward, I'm unsure if all the other meals would be included, so they might have a meal expense. Because you figure we're all day Thursday, all day Friday, and Saturday till about 1:00. So I'm definitely going to have some meals there, and they only have two vouchers for the Huntington Place Food Court. But they know that, and they're okay with it as of right now, but-
Could be a similar, yeah, I know. No, I just want to ask, what is the difference? So that you're getting the vouchers from-
The DECA registration.
So what's the difference of the district providing something like we do any other state competition?
There is no difference, other than that on their own meal, we just have to have the receipt now, for what they pay. But we can issue a check ahead of time, and, you know, they turn in the receipt.
That's what I thought, okay.
But there is, this is coming out of the academic state competition fees, which is in each of the buildings.
So there is that ability to have that.
So I have to pay for it, keep their receipts, because who knows if the kids are going to have their receipts.
Right. Or, like, if you could be advanced money and bring, you know, do, I think whatever would work, but that is something-
So if the boards wants to apply this like everything else, then the action item would be for what we do all of them? Lodging, food, and transportation, just as the breakdown of the form would-
Yep, I think so, right.
Okay. Then that would be on the action item that comes on the 26th. But between that, I'll work with Mrs. Sabo, Mr. Christensen, regarding the actual dollar amount, so that'll come on the 26th.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll have your, you know, we'll go for it in two weeks, and you won't have to come back to that Superintendent Wamsley updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a proposed overnight extended trip request to Gaylord Michigan from Mr. Trun and Mr. Stewart. I don't know if Mr. Trun's still here?
Oh, nice, you got to go grab a course, thank you.
Doing double duty, I'm sure.
You can probably tell.
Right.
He's done this a couple of-
The purpose is, we're going to be going away weekend of May 10th through 12th, and we're going to Gaylord, Foster's, Deacon, Foster's, 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 etc. It's competitions and the team bonding thing. Last year, we lost in the state semifinals, and Gaylord won it all. So the quality competition's going to be really good. And then team bonding, like, you know, you look there every year, things happen differently. Two years, we went there and it was a tornado. And last year, we went there and it was beautiful, gorgeous weather, and the girls did so many neat things, like, after Saturday morning, she went on the lake on this pontoon boat that John has a huge motor, and dragged the kids all over, and they were out there several hours, just having a great time. And then came in, we had like the team scavenging around, which the house is on three different levels in this nation, even sort of trying to get to find whatever clues are, but they had a great time, and then you went out on the lake on Saturday night and just watched the sunset. And you could tell in them, they really, really enjoyed it, so much so, you know, we started practicing, because we're four weeks away, they're dying, they're grown already, but anyways, we're already practicing on Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Sunday nights. And when you see the girls come, and they're overjoyed to see each other and just talking and having a good time, so much so that I have to almost beat the crap out of them to begin for saw, people here for saw, I mean, for saw slicing, but it's such a neat thing to see, they really, really enjoy being together. And they had a good time last year, and hopefully they're having a good time this year. Anyways, I'll answer whatever questions you have. I've been doing this a little while.
Thank you. Any questions? How many years-
Forty-six.
No, not that current, I know after. How many years have you been doing something similar to this?
I've been doing, I've pulled it back, I was, oh, I know, a lot longer than that. I started out in the original Foster's cabin on Joel's Way, and it was really primitive, and, you know, you had to jump the fudge on the toilet and whatever, but it was a good time, and we got a way in, went to the west banks and did what's, and that was, and that cross was part of the process. And, you know, there's a minor cost for girls, I think we covered two meals, I think on Friday night or Saturday afternoon, that's all Spencer ends.
It's great, it's a great opportunity for them. Any questions from anybody else?
Just to clarify, there's a reference about funds and so forth. I did confer with Mr. Stewart that they have an internal softball, they have two internal softball, that's all done through the district funds, that are for softball, so, but there's no outside nonprofit organization that Mr. Stewart works with.
If someone can afford that, you take care of it.
Yeah, we take care of it, yeah. He never leaves somebody out. And it's not unusual for a girl to go, and say, oh, my parents are here, well, this is okay, and I forgot to mind you, please be careful. It's always there, it's an embarrassing place. Take care of the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll be voting on it. Yes.
We'll be voting on it in two weeks. Superintendent Wamsley will update you when that happens. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next up, we have the MASB Board of Directors election. In our board packet, there were, was backup documentation for the three members that are We have Melinda Hines, Bridget McWhiston, am I saying that correctly? I'm not sure, and Evelyn Pride more. So everybody's already discussed, has anybody has a favorite? We are to decide who we would want to support as a board, and then we will direct Superintendent Wamsley to fill out the ballot and submit it on our behalf, correct?
Yep, so at the next meeting, there will be the official action of the board, the board, the discussion of the candidates. And then the action of the board to say, cast the ballot on this, on the board on behalf for this person. I believe Cindy's already got the ballot that was sent to her or through our office as the doc rotation indicates.
Does anybody like to start the discussion with who they think you feel?
Sure, I will. Just the one thing that I did notice different between the three of them were the certification through the MASB, and we need to advocate for, obviously, King's certification, so I, it just struck me as a big thing that would be for Ms. McWhiston, Lake Orion schools. So I understand that Ms. Linger is 17 years in.
No, I just have three women.
Yes.
Oh, he's in there.
Yes, the last three in Region 8.
Region 8.
And I believe she is also the incumbent, is that correct?
She is. Who doesn't look like she holds any certification to her?
Doesn't make her not a good board member.
That's just my thoughts.
Any other discussion, anybody'd like to talk? We could also just flip over on our own, we know that it's here, can talk about it, bring it back up, and have your decision hopefully made in two weeks from now. Is there anything else anybody else would like to share?
I just think it's really hard, because you don't know anything about these three people, except for what's put on one sheet of paper.
Yeah. It'd be nice to get something in the mail, did we get something in the mail for something else?
No, that's, we got, we get those from the phone, but at least I haven't had any kind of reach out.
No, I haven't either. Just that-
Ms. McWhiston did, she emailed us, oh, I believe.
Oh, did she? Maybe I'll go look.
Yeah, she did.
Last week, yeah.
I thought there was another one that did reach out to us, but I couldn't find that email. But I, hers was there, and it really was just all the same as what's on her sheet. It wasn't much different.
In her email?
In her email.
So at the next meeting, when we do the motion, there will be, your name, I motion for a blank to insert, so if you feel strongly on one candidate, you'll have to make the motion, we'll have a second, and if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then we'll look for a different motion for someone else, another name, so.
So, make sure everybody's prepared in two weeks, please. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation on our School Resource Officer Agreement, Superintendent Wamsley.
So this is an evolution, and it's a recommendation by our attorney that it become more formalized into a agreement contract. We've had a school resource officer in the district for the 10 years that I've been in the district, so this isn't anything new. It was actually in a conversation, every August, we do a administrative retreat, part of that retreat is I bring Jennifer Starlin, who you've seen many times as one of the attorneys from Troon, she's a Richmond graduate, alumni, talk to the administrative team regarding just the latest updates and legal cases that may have come through, just to be aware of as for handling issues situations. And in that conversation, it was mentioned that, to reference our contract, well, afterwards, I had a conversation with her, and I said, we don't have a formal contract, we agree on rates of pay, we agree on what days they're going to be here, et cetera. And so she put together for us this contract that's in attachment, that formalizes it. I sent it over to the city, Mr. Moore, the city manager, for their markups, and their markups are basically just clarifying dates and their insurance policy, because this is a city of Richmond employee, not a district employee, so a lot of the insurance rates cover under the city. So you'll see in that markup, you'll see areas in yellow that were amended by the city, which we're in agreement with, there's nothing different about that one. In fact, the minimum insurance, which is Section 13, that our district attorney recommended, their insurance policies exceed those numbers, so well-covered there. The one thing, though, I do want to point out, and it's in the backup email, is for the longest time, the, when we have a liaison officer, they backfill that officer's position, we were charged the lower of the two rates, basically, they backfill. Over the last several years, the part-time officers have unionized and have created a wage scale, so going forward into next school year, we will actually be charged the rate of pay for the officer that we have, and you have in the backup their rates of pay for the next three years. So my recommendation to you would be to authorize at the next board meeting, me to sign the contract, so for the 23-24 school year, and as we go through the budget process, to authorize me to assign the contract for the 24-25 school year, pending the board wants to continue the liaison officer for the next school year. Any questions?
So, because the school year's already started, and the attorney says we need to do a contract, that's why we would be, what we would be approving is for this school year, 23-24, right now, in two weeks, and then saying that he wants to continue, and so put it in the budget for next year, that's what's going to happen?
What I would, the recommendation, the motion I would ask for is to approve for the 23-24 school year-
Right.
And authorize the superintendent to enter into a 24-25 school year, pending the approval of the FY25 budget. So if it's in the budget, then I can authorize and sign the contract. Yet for some reason, it's not in the budget, then I wouldn't be authorized to sign the contract. Currently, we're paying for this out of the Section 31AA funds, which is the combination of the mental health slash school security funds, that's where we'll get paid for this year. And based on the budget that we're hearing, they're applying that that should be in the budget for next year, so I can pay for it on the same funding source, not the general one.
Does the resource, does the resource officer have like a gasket area in one of the buildings?
They have assigned days, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, let me out here, Tuesday. You get a Monday and Thursday, I think it's supposed to be in the other. So they're supposed to be here on those two assigned days. Depending on the building and what they're doing, they may or may not have an assigned area. So for instance, if they're meeting with students, we would either use the conference room, or not a whole lot of office space is open, like the middle school, there are no office spaces, so it'll probably be the conference room. Sometimes they're going into classrooms and doing activities to just kind of work with kids so that they are, they open up and know the resource, so they're, they will report something if they see something, just that ability. Sometimes we're using at the beginning and end of the day, based on the traffic patterns and congestion and parents that we have. patterns and congestion and parents that we have. It doesn't preclude them from coming on a different day, it's just how the, the calibration is.
So would it be, so then, doing a yearly contract, every year it's going to depend on whether we keep it in the budget, so, right, in my understanding, we're, we're going to vote in two weeks to do it for this school year, and that part of that motion will say, enter into the contract if it's going to be in the budget, so that's what we would do every year? It's that kind of?
Correct. Because as their contract changes, their rates may change, and we may want to do, like other districts have done, and have our own person, might be a retired police officer that we contract as a Richmond employee rather than a City of Richmond in this case, or if the board wants to expand the number of days based on input from the buildings and so forth.
Right.
We got to look at that total cost. The cost next year will be more than what we're paying this year, which is, I believe currently this year it's about twenty-two, twenty-five thousand dollars.
So do we pay the resource officer, or do we pay the city?
We pay the City of Richmond.
And then the city pays them?
And then they pay them. We pay the City of Richmond. They invoice us, usually it's quarterly, some years it's been at the semester break and at the end of the year, depending on how the bills get processed to the city. We have the, we, we have started where we have the liaison officer side and start documenting what they're doing with kids, so we have an idea of when they're, when they're in the building, to cross reference, cross-reference that with the bill, so we make sure that, not that I, I not trust them, but I want to have the backup documentation, because the regulations for Section 31A haven't been released by the state yet, so we're, we're anticipating what we need to have for documentation, but we don't know if this is what will work.
Well, also that would give us what the value is too.
Correct.
What, what we need or don't need.
Yes. And we've had, this will be our third resource officer, Officer McCollum, Officer Davenport, now Officer Troy, each one has a very different personality and different interactions and so forth.
Any more questions? Okay, so we'll prepare. Vote for that in two more weeks. Okay, next up is our Blue Devils raves to recognize a valued employee or student. First up, Candace Conner.
Um, yes. I had the honor of attending one of the track team fundraisers this Saturday, and it was called Meet Bingo, and it was quite fun, very interesting and unique way of raising money, and it was very entertaining the whole evening, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Coach Alex and Carter for running such a fun event. We had a great time, it was my birthday night out, so that's what we spent it. The race was fourteen, so shout out to him for that, it was a good time.
Thank you.
Next up, Sandy.
Uh, I do not, I do not have any raves.
Kelly, anything for you?
No, nothing to me.
Danielle?
Andrew.
And Margaret.
I just want to give a rave to our very own Connor, who made it out of individual wrestling districts, and he will be wrestling at regionals on Saturday, so well done to Connor. He along with some other members of the team, but I'm not going to steal his thunder, I only wanted to thunder him personally, so that's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
And I am all set tonight. Next up, student board of education representative report.
Okay, starting off our elementary school, we have our preschool winter social will be February 22nd from 4:00 to 5:30. The preschool roundup and kindergarten planning is underway. This year, there will be a signing day table for photo opportunity. At our middle school, all of the students at RMS have completed their winter, winter portions of the NWA testing. We're continuing to see growth with our students. And the RMS Winter Fest Dance was a great time, special thanks to everyone helping make, helping make it a success. In the high school, student government and the student athlete council are sorting the penny wars this week with Armada. We have expanded the wars inside of RHS as well. We're doing a grade competition to increase the number of points that we will bring in for the competition. The winner of the RHS penny wars will choose six members from their grade to a dodgeball game against staff at the next assembly. The total of our RHS penny wars will go against Armada, as the losing school will have their athletic director who are the rivals mascot at halftime. The game against Armada will be on Tuesday, February 20th. In athletics, boys' basketball had a huge game last week against the Cross Blacks, where they won in overtime after beating down seventeen points at the end of the third quarter. They played North Branch tonight in a makeup game. Wrestling won their 25th consecutive district title last Wednesday against Armada. They will have team regionals on Wednesday against Yale and then Elginak on, or in Mount Morris. They also have seven individuals placed in the district, Jackson Lasik, Cooper Hobbins took fourth, Hayden Burshon and Wyatt Peters took third, Jacob Bing and Harry Ruzek second, and Matthew Mishman, the district champ. All seven will move on next Saturday to the regional tournament in Hazel Park. And I didn't have a student update, but I did talk about that during the course catalog. So I am all set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have superintendent, does this slate of update?
Happy 100th day of school today. We made it to the three-digit mark, so. A couple things, last Friday, Ms. Staples and I had the distinct honor of going and recognizing our teacher of the years. This year's candidates or recipients will be, were Amy Barrett from the elementary school, Rachel Churchill from the middle school, and Carrie Shagna from the high school. And we'll be recognizing our teacher of the year candidates at a future board meeting, as well as these three will now go compete at the county level by level, elementary, middle and high school, against 21 other districts in the county. Our teacher of the year reception for them, for their dinner and award ceremony will be on April 11th at the Italian Cultural Center. Board members, you'll receive an email from me soon to see if any of you would like to come to that event with our teacher of the years and their, and their guests. March 21st is a Thursday, is the State of the District, invitations to parents, guardians, community members and elected officials will be going out either the end of this week or at the early part of next week, so stick to you for that. It will be an opportunity for the community to come in to see, well, the theme is a, a 10-year look back with an eye on the future. That 10 years encompasses two bonds that we've done as a district, to see what, what we have accomplished, not only from a physical perspective of the facilities, but also the academic and our scores. And then we will be with an eye on the future of where our opportunities lie ahead for a district. Class of 2037 kindergarten roundup will be April, or excuse me, February 28th, at 4:30 will be dinner, 5 o'clock will be the ceremony. Class of 2038 and class of 2039 at three and four-year-old preschoolers will be on February 29th, which is a Thursday. Feel free to join us, board members, you'll, more information, there's information on our website. As Connor said, we were doing a couple things different, there's going to be a signing table, like you mentioned, but you do with athletes committing to a, a university or college, we have a signing table, there will be buses there for students to actually, this year they'll actually get a chance to ride on the bus around the Lee, we'll have dinner, and a lot of activities to expedite the process of registration. We are looking forward to welcoming our newest Blue Devils. For legislative update, on February 7th, the governor released her, her budget, based on the State of the State address she did in late January. Her budget calls for a $240 per pupil increase, or a 2.5% increase. That is, as we know and expected, significantly less than the last two years increases, though the state aid and the general fund all show increases in the budget projections from the revenue estimating conferences, they are not the level of increases they have been in the past. Her proposal also spreads the 2.5% increase to special education, English language learners, rural districts at risk, ISD, CT programs and grade start readiness, also see significant increases. If you had a chance to see her State of the State address, she is looking at expanding the number of GSRP seats eligibility by changing the income gap, which will allow more students to be eligible for free preschool. We do not anticipate having any House or Senate budgets till probably May, as we have two special elections that are, that are being held to determine who will have the majority of the House and Senate. So, right now, this is our per pupil allocation number to start, is 241 per pupil. The House Committee is hearing her testimony last week regarding special education certification extensions. Senate Bill 15, 518 extends the sunset to 2027, which allows special education teachers to receive interim certification. This is an alternate path to making it easier for school employees, schools to employ special education teachers. Many organizations, like the Michigan School Board Association, support this bill to address the shortages and support teacher recruitment districts are facing. The reality is until we have more students entering college of education programs and exiting, we will have the ongoing teacher shortage throughout the state. The one that I, I know myself and other superintendents are watching is the Senate Education Committee on Dyslexia Screening and Support Schools, which is Senate Bill 567 and 568, which focus on early detection. The plan is this goes into effect the '25, '26 school year. It would require screening of K-3 students three times using an approved stool, screening tool, and offer then specific support. While the intent of these bills, I think all of my colleagues at superintendent level are not, just not opposed to, the way the bills have been written initially, it could unintentionally limit access to services for students who might have reading disabilities that are not related to dyslexia, so it's just something we're watching as it goes through the process. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have items of interest from the Board of Education. I'll start, I'll bring that in with Margaret.
Nope, I'm good.
Candace?
I'm good.
Kelly?
Nope, Connor covered it all, the wrestling.
Okay. Danielle?
Um, I was, when you mentioned about the legislative update, Superintendent Wamsley, I was thinking about when you mentioned elections. The elections don't affect our school days then for February and May, because there's one coming up in a couple weeks.
No, but they're.
Because they're not housed here, but it doesn't affect.
Correct, correct.
I should make sure, so we still have school days.
Yes.
Sandy?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I had the privilege of attending, as Mr. Wamsley said earlier, the CT breakfast celebration, that was my first time ever attending, and that is a really awesome event, so congratulations to both Kayla and Lucas. There is a lot of, a lot of cool things happening, a lot of CT programs that I was very surprised to even see, they didn't know they existed. And like, the guys heard earlier, you know, there's just, there's hundreds of students in it, and these two students are the two that were chosen and honored, and it was a really special event. It was a really awesome event, and a lot of, a lot of cool things happening, was really, was really awesome too, for me, to see so many other options for students other than college, and then also so many females taking on these CT courses that were normally, I guess, you know, male type, I guess, roles, it was really very empowering for me, so it was really cool to see that, so thank you for the invite, I appreciate that. And then, also, secondly, I wanted to ask, because I did learn about the track teams fundraiser at 7 o'clock that night, so it was a little too late for me to go, but I was wondering, is there any, like, do all of the programs, do they have to, does that, is there any, I guess, anybody that has, they have to report, like, that they are having fundraisers to, like, or anything like that? Like, I just, I would really like to know about them, I try to participate as much as I possibly can.
Last week, Mr. Thiel and I had a conversation with Mr. Trent about formalizing and then being sent out to the board any type of fundraisers by sports, or even within the schools.
Clubs, yeah.
Clubs, so that you at least have a glance. We've got to, we got to do a reset with our staff, that they've got to notify before they start a fundraiser, their immediate supervisor, if you will, whether it's athletics for Mr. Trent, or their building principal for clubs.
Yeah, not trying to get anybody in trouble.
No, no, no.
I don't really want to know about them. I like to participate if at all possible, that's all.
Right, and that was the conversation we had.
I'll tell you about it afterwards.
Okay, sounds good. I mean, I totally know if I'm like friends on Facebook with somebody or something like that, and it's, you know what I mean, I got a phone call from somebody that was there, they're like, "Hey, I thought you'd be here," and I was like, "Well, I would have if I knew about it."
And that was the conversation we had last week about regarding how to, how to formalize this so that we can get it out, not only just to the board, to the whole organization, if they are interested in helping one of the groups.
Yeah, right, no, exactly, right, okay, all right.
Great, thank you. Okay, and I am all set today. Next up, we have our public comment. Since the last board, board meeting, the president and us as a board received an email from a coach regarding his termination and notification. The email is forwarded to Mr. Wamsley, who is dealing with this concern. As we had no public comment at the last board meeting, I have nothing to address as far as that goes. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please say, sign in and state your name. We have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Being no public comments, we will be moving on to our next agenda item. I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I show it to Section AC of the Michigan Board of Education, and we can say, I am going to the Board of Education, we'll close session for the purposes of negotiations.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. Do I have to roll on this, do I? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will not be doing.
You, you have to say what you vote, just.
Oh, and I vote aye. Okay, thank you. So motion passes. We'll be going into closed session at 8:27, and we will not be taking care of any more business after this.